All right, we're going to start tonight with the NRTA. And the first item on our agenda tonight is the Finance and Audit Committee of the NRTA Advisory Board, which is us. We need to first approve the minutes of July 22nd, 2015. With no objections, the minutes will be approved. And then we have a presentation of 2017 preliminary budget. Paula?
Yes, this is just the presentation of the FY '17 budget preliminary budget. A couple of things to point out to you. One of the biggest ones is under purchase transportation, there is an increase there, and that is due to the Department of Labor's ruling on the increase in prevailing wage for bus drivers that amounts to almost $11 an hour. So, the budget in the season breakdown reflects some minor cuts for that increase, which could be as high as $230,000. So, as an example, starting on a Monday instead of a Saturday, Labor Day and Columbus Day are both early this year, so we've looked at those. And other line items in the budget were reduced. We went with a new insurance vendor, and we're seeing about a $20,000 cost savings with that. And we'll continue to look for items like that. We have filed an appeal of the position classification with the Department of Labor. We're also working with Representative Keating's office, and hopefully to know more next week the impacts of what that could be.
Bobby, can I just, Paul, I just want to make sure I got what you're talking about. This is under the expenses, purchase transportation going from $1,169 to $1,294?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then...
And just to say it again, and that increase was more than you expected, and therefore to have a budget that works, you've had to cut back in other line items?
And some service, yes.
Some service, okay.
We're sort of somewhat hopeful. And then the one thing below the budget is where the ferry connector service is. And I've looked at a couple of different scenarios, and in that first column, it should be 525 to 1010, or 526 to 1010. So, the cost for the 2016 season is $280,000. We have committed revenue, including charging a fare this year of $130,000, so we were short $150,000 to provide the service. The next scenario is running at, just before Memorial Day to Labor Day, at a cost of $202,000, with $127,000 in revenue, leaving a deficit of $75,000. And June 1st to September 5th, at a cost of $187,000, the revenue of $124.5, with a deficit of $62.5.
Paula, the $120 commitment contributions, does that include town money?
Yes, it does.
And how much of it's town?
$50,000.
So, we only got a commitment of $70,000 from all these businesses downtown?
Correct. So far.
Why?
Not hopeful on the rest, though.
So, I guess we should talk about this right now, because this is the elephant in the room, so to speak. We either, if we want to continue the service the way it is from 525 to 1010, we, the town, needs to find $150,000, which I doubt we're going to do.
Right.
If we want to continue it from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we need to find $75,000, which may even be, I think, no matter what we do here, I don't think we're going to find this money. You know, we might be able to find another $25,000, but I crunch the numbers. Paula said we had roughly 9,000 riders last year. It's $31 a person, each way. I mean...
You know, it's nice of us to provide the service, but I think the service is benefiting the steamship and the High Line, and those bringing people to downtown, and getting them out to where they can park, and there, they need to contribute more to make this service work. That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I'm disappointed that the contributions are dropping that quickly. There's, you look at the amount of money that is spent on transportation by some of these entities on the other side. They have huge parking lots, and they bought parking lots in buildings, and they run buses, and it just seems to me that there's got to be, that we should be, if we need that, which we do, we should be getting more contributions.
We provided the parking lot.
Oh, yeah?
We provided the free parking.
Good.
They should provide the bus service. I mean, the High Line has buses. They have drivers. So, I, you know, I think we need to make a decision sooner than later here.
Should we go back and, Paula, you've met with all the various entities, is that true?
Or someone on my behalf, yes.
On your behalf, yes, okay.
I might be able to convince one organization to contribute. And I think this goes back, quite frankly, to the 2013-2014 discussion to start the service, where there was sort of a commitment made by the town to look for permanent, a permanent funding source. And that's what I'm hearing from the private contributors, you know, that they don't mind contributing, not to great amounts, but at least something if there's a permanent funding stream, and their funding doesn't continue at high levels forever.
We're contributing, already contributing $50,000 to it. How much did they expect us to contribute? We're, I'm not going to pay for this service, the majority of it. Either they come up with the money, or they come up with their own service, or this service goes away, to be quite frank. We're benefiting them. Yes, some of our residents get to use it, but the majority of the people that use this service are commuter workmen who don't even live here.
Well, I think, as Paula mentioned earlier, I think that number has started its shift last summer, and I think a fair number of islanders parked and used it to get into town.
I have a very simple way to fund for this, and we could fund it entirely, and we wouldn't have to do anything. And that would be to put the ferry embarkation fee on the commuter books, and then we'd have plenty of money to fund this. But the steamship and the High Line don't want to do that, and the ferry fee that we collect now pays for our summer specials. So, what's more important, a park-and-ride or having summer specials? I say we need the least...
I vote for summer specials.
Yeah, I agree. So, we can't fund both from that one, that one fund. So, either we increase the fee, or we start charging it on the commuter books, or they fund it.
What would it entail to put the fee under the commuter books? Is that a letter, or is that a change?
Home roll.
Special legislation.
All right. So, we'd have to start that.
I know that's something we've talked about in the past, but we haven't, you know, gotten on top of that, Paul, yet. There's the more important thing.
And I think that that's part of the frustration, is that we've talked about things, we've mentioned things, but nothing has been put forward or voted on to consider.
Yeah. So, maybe just some other ways of looking at this. Bobby, I think your point about the commuter book is well-made. However, you know, you could ask these entities to put up money in lieu of going down the path of getting an embarkation fee that would pay for this service. So, you're saying, well, we're going to, you know, you're going to pay for it one way or another. We can only go down this path, or not. Another point I'd like to make is that there's 9,000 people using this service. That really, you know, we have a big congestion problem that affects the bottom line of businesses downtown, and the viability of downtown, and the well-being of our citizens, and I think it's important that we do try to provide a service. Maybe we chip in another $25,000 and go back to these entities and say, hey, can you find the last $50,000? Give it a go. You know, I think we can work with, we can try to work within our budgets to come up with another $25,000, but I think, you know, to just throw our hands up and say, oh, these businesses aren't willing to work with us. I think we need to be a little better at negotiating and give this a little more of a chance to succeed. It's grown over the last two years, and if we want it to continue to grow, and we are serious, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about parking and traffic, but when it comes down to funding something that helps deal with that, we're not willing to fund up the small money to mitigate those problems. Some thoughts.
But then what do we do at this juncture?
You want to give me another week?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's...
I mean, how do you guys feel about, you know, if the town would contribute another 25, that's a, you know, and I can try to get the rest or close to it, is 61 to 95, what you want to look at?
Yeah, I mean, I think at some point you have to say, and that's it.
Yeah.
We're willing to come up with X amount of dollars. If you think the service helps benefit the passengers coming over, then I think you folks need to step up again.
And if they don't want to contribute anymore, and we contribute another 25, figure out how many days you can do it on that, and if it ends on August 5th, it ends on August 5th.
There you go, Bobby.
Yeah. I mean...
So, anybody want to help me?
That's, this is the problem, is that we have so many things in our plates that I don't want to go beating on people's doors for money, to be quite frank, Paula.
I don't necessarily want to grovel with them either.
I don't either, and that's...
Well, that's why I think, we're willing to do X, that's it.
You know, I think that, you know, I think that this board would commit to funding $75,000 annually to this service, but I don't, short of raising the ferry fee or coming up with some other funding source other than what we have...
How long does that take? How long would Libby, special legislation for that take?
A year, two years?
You know, I mean...
And you get all the communities off-island, it could get very complicated.
My understanding, and anyone that knows more than me can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we can do it just for Nantucket.
Well, Libby? You know, I agree with Rick. I got off the steamship the other day, and there's the Steamship Authority minivan that's there, that's dropping people to and from their parking lot. And yet, over here, we can't get them to, I mean, 120,000, we put 50 of it in, so between the two of them, they only funded...
70.
70,000.
And was some of that carryover from last year?
No.
No, that's all new, okay.
Yep.
And business is good enough for the High Line, we're getting a new high-speed ferry with 500 passengers.
Oh, and it just turns out, we just approved that, you know, a year ago, or two years ago, they came to us and asked us for a favor, and let's continue on that air of friendship.
All right. I have a question. As a board, are we willing to commit to, you know, to asking for the funding be on the ferry tickets, on the commuter tickets? Is that something we should motion now and put it on the town meeting in the fall?
Yeah, I think so.
If that's what you have to do.
Does it have to go to town meeting?
It does, so, yeah, we do. So, but I think if we want to do that, we need, we, you know, instead of just talking, is there an action we can take, you know?
Matt, you know, that would raise a lot more funds, I think, towards this service. You know, I don't know the exact numbers, but I know it would definitely help out a lot more than, you know, $50,000, getting it on the commuter books.
So, I think we're willing to do that.
Yeah. I think we can just take a consensus here that, I mean, we can put it to a vote if somebody wants to make the motion.
Sure, I'd make a motion that the board would support whatever action is required to add the ferry embarkation fee to the commuter books, whatever that takes.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, there, we have a possible funding source. You can, we'll commit another $25,000. Let them know that that's all we're putting in is 75. Either they come up with the rest, or this, figure out how many days you can run the service, Paula, with what you've got, and that's when the service will end. And if you want to start later, to go later, if you want to start closer to the 4th of July...
Or if they want to run the service themselves, if they want to run the service, that's, you know, and can do it more efficiently, that's fine too.
You know, if they want to use, if the High Line wants to use their buses and drivers, we'll give them the money, and they can run it. Yeah. And take it right out of your hands, and you won't have to deal with it.
So, you would let, so I know what to tell them. You would let them use the lot, or the, the, the people could park at the park-and-ride lot, and the steamship and High Line can figure out how they want to get people there?
If they don't want to come up with the additional cash to pay us to do it.
I mean, we...
We have to bring that back to us.
We have to bring that back to discuss.
I think that what I'm hearing here, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the consensus is we contribute $75,000 to a fast ferry connector. Whether it was run by the NRTA or by the High Line and Steamship privately, we don't care. And they can use the Two Fairgrounds lot. We just, we're not committing, at this point, any more money to it without raising or putting the ferry fee on commuter books, okay? Does that make sense to everyone?
It's well-stated.
Everybody, okay?
All right. We're on a, we're on a mission. All right, so...
Evidently.
We're going to, we're going to, Paula, getting back to this budget.
Yes.
Are we adopting this budget?
No.
No, okay.
Do you have any comments or anything, you know, I'll work through...
I think we just gave it all to you on the ferry thing, but...
Yeah, why'd I even ask that?
I have one. On the audit expenses, they're going up quite substantially, just year after year, and I was just wondering what those were. $7,000 in 2014, and it's going up to 19 in 2016.
But it's going down.
Actually, it will be less than that, because the feds raised the OMB 133 to higher than what we get, so we don't have to go through that audit, so it'll save about, I think, $2,500, $3,000.
Cool. Yeah, I see it's going down to $10,000 in 2017, but I was just kind of curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, now we're going on to the agenda for the meeting of the NRTA Advisory Board Community Room. The first is the approval of minutes for June 24th and January 6th, 2016, June 24th, 2015. We're a little late on the minutes here. No objections, those minutes will be approved. The other report of the Finance and the Audit Committee of the 2017 preliminary budget. Okay, you just saw the preliminary budget. Now, are we voting on the budget now?
Nope.
Next week, right?
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Then we have a report of the federal compliance review.
Yes, just to let you know that, let me get caught up with you here. As a sub-recipient of federal funding from Mass DOT, they were required to conduct compliance reviews of its sub-recipients as a part of the Federal Transit Administration's requirements for a state agency. This was the first time that they've done such a review, and it was conducted by Mass DOT, Rail and Transit, and a consultant was retained to assist in the writing review and issuing a final report for the compliance review. This was a huge undertaking. It was about...
Who paid for the consultant?
Mass DOT. This was a huge undertaking. It was about 50 hours of work before they even came to the site visit. It was a 58-page package containing over 200 questions that had to be answered, and backup and policies, and everything involved with all the different regulations had to be provided to them ahead of time. The areas that they were looking at were project management and grant administration, procurement, disadvantaged business enterprise, equal employment opportunity, asset management, Americans with Disabilities Act, the Drug and Alcohol Program, charter bus service, school bus service, intercity bus service, eligibility, nondiscrimination in the delivery of service, and planning and coordination. They came down for two days for a site review and tore my office apart with documents, but I think it went very well. There were very few areas of discussion. They provided some technical assistance, which is good, and they're not sure when the final report will be issued, but they're hoping sometime May-June timeframe.
It is quite a document.
Oh, that's only one of them, Rick.
Okay, so, do we need to approve this? Is that...
Yes. And this was, this was how it went. This needed to be, you had approved a title of six rights of beneficiaries a couple of years ago, and they found an error in it. So, instead of saying information is available on the NRTA's website, we need to say for more information on the NRTA's Title VI program to visit our website. So, I'm asking you to approve that change.
I'd be happy to make a motion that the NRTA Board approves the change as outlined by Paula in the text of that document.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next is the approval of the contract award to BTS of Massachusetts, Inc., for the operation and management of the NRTA elderly and disabled van service, your Island Ride.
Yes.
I take it an RFP went out?
It did.
Have we worked with this company before?
Yes, they are, have been the operator of our fixed route service since the inception, and have been the contractor for the elderly and disabled van service from 2011. I have no complaints and only good things to say about them and the way they work with us in the community to provide a high-quality level of service. So, I would recommend that you vote to approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign with BTS of Mass, Inc.
So moved.
So, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now, I put this small thing ahead of the 260 pages of the procurement manual that I gave you, so you don't have to go all the way through.
We have the approval of the NRTA procurement policies and procedures. I'll be honest, I haven't read the whole thing. Don't plan on either.
The policy, the procurement policies and procedures, they had a couple of changes that were incorporated into them, but this document follows the federal circular on procurement and what needs to be followed, so it's all step-by-step, step-through that, and something we've been following for, you know, for 20...
I'm confident our staff is adequately prepared to manage this process, Bobby, and would move that we take whatever action is necessary for the board to approve the procurement policies and procedures.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any other business?
One thing real quick. Just to let everyone know that the year-round transit study is nearing completion and is scheduled to be presented to the NRTA Advisory Board, and I believe we agreed on a joint Board of Selectmen meeting for that presentation. On April 13th, the consultants will be on island, so they will make the presentation, and I hope we'll have a good discussion of the results of that. And for those that can't make it to the night meeting, there will be a sneak peek that will be presented to stakeholders and the public from 10:00 to 11:30 in the Studio Theater at the Dreamland. And all kinds of information will be going out in the near future on that.
Great.
Are we anticipating, hopefully, putting that in play for this way, or not till...
After the ferry connector discussion?
Well, I'm just, I mean, we're thinking...
It's going to be a funding thing.
So, probably not this funding cycle, but maybe hopefully next funding cycle.
We'll have lots of options, we'll have lots of options to talk about.
We've mentioned that before, Bobby, that probably another year to get it in play.
Yeah, just, I'm sure people...
It depends on the funding source and the timing of different things.
All right. Any other business for the NRTA? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.
We'll give Libby a minute to get herself together. Paul, you can take these back.
Can I have you sign contracts quick, Bobby?
Yeah. Why? I got a home of the year.
Do you? Oh, my gosh.
Biases, this is his last meeting. Next one. Libby, you ready?
Yep.
Going to open the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 16th, 2016. First, we'll call the call to order. The acceptance of the agenda, with no alterations, the agenda will be accepted as written. Announcements?
This meeting...
Go ahead, you can do it.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded per provisions of the open meeting law. Annual town meeting starts Saturday, April 2nd, 9:00 a.m. at the Nantucket High School Auditorium, and the annual town election is Tuesday, April 12th. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make two other brief announcements. For town meeting, parking is obviously going to be tricky because of the school construction. Civic League has very graciously offered to provide some shuttle transportation, and that will be as follows. Between 8:15 a.m. and 10 a.m. on Saturday, April 2nd, there will be three 14-passenger vans that will leave every 10 minutes from the Two Fairgrounds Road parking lot to the high school. Then, during the one-hour period following the close of the annual town meeting, the vans will transport people back. The Civic League is working to get a system in place to advance register by email if you want to use the van. Otherwise, I'm going to be talking to the superintendent about what arrangements we should get out there into the public about where people ought to be parking. I'm hoping the boys' club will allow use of their lot, and to the extent that people can carpool, it's highly recommended that you do something like that, because it's going to be quite tight, I think, as we can all see.
Or you can ride your bike.
Or you could ride your bike. That's an even better idea. Also, I just want to mention that at next week's board meeting, I'll review with you later on, under Town Manager Report, a little bit of the items that are coming up, but under announcements, we do have the alternative operational model report that we commissioned from some consultants for our Island Home. A presentation about that will be given to the board next week during your meeting, and then the next day, we will have a forum from 10:00 to 12:00 in this room, so that people can ask additional questions about it that we might not be able to get to during your meeting. So, that's all next Wednesday and Thursday.
Just for clarification, when we have that, this is a presentation for our board. We're not necessarily going to take public comment during that. If they want to make public comment, they can ask their questions the next day.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we don't want to turn it into a 10-hour meeting.
Right.
So, all right. Public comment, is there anyone who has public comment on an item that's not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. New business? We don't have any new business, but I do want to make one quick comment. I see Mr. Starr sitting in the front row. Are you here for this over-60 license? That's on next week's agenda, Mr. Starr. We have the public hearing next week. I didn't want you to sit here the whole night waiting for it, so, all right?
But we welcome you staying.
Yeah, you can stay if you want, but your, the public hearing for that is next week, okay? Yep. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. The approval of the payroll warrants for the weekend ending March 6th and March 13th, with no objections, those will be approved. The approval of the treasury warrants for March 9th and March 16th, with no objections, those will be approved. And the approval of the pending contracts for March 16th is set forth on the spreadsheet here identified as Exhibit 1. Libby?
Okay, we've got the renewal of the lease with the Mass DOT for the Registry of Motor Vehicles office in the second floor of the town building. They pay us about approximately $9,000 a year in rent for that office.
Is that the same amount we've had, do you recall?
I think it's the same amount.
I think it might have gone up a little, actually.
If it did, it's miniscule.
It's like a miracle for one up.
Yeah.
It's a bargain for rent.
It's beyond a bargain. But anyway...
It's nice to have the registry on Nantucket.
It is, yes.
It is very nice to have the registry on Nantucket.
And they have some good new staff that's in there, so we're happy about that. We have a service agreement for the Marine Department with AGM Marine. This is a $1 million contract, a little over $1 million, for the construction of the Easy Street Bulkhead. We've been talking about this. We're getting it partially funded through a state loan, and also a small grant from the state as well. We have a purchase agreement for the Fire Department with Fire One Manufacturing, Inc., $234,400 for two tanker trucks. And I did ask the chief if he could briefly explain what these are, because the funding is going to give us more than what we had originally planned, right?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. 2014 town meeting approved $240,000 for one tanker. We have two tankers, both approximately 30 years old and in need of replacement. The second tanker was scheduled for replacement next year by using surplus military chassis that were given to us for free, with about 10,000 miles each on them, four-wheel drive, off-wheel, off-road chassis. We're able to do two for the price of one, so we will not be coming for the $240,000 next year. This would replace both of them.
And we're going to have room in this new station. We're not adding equipment, we're replacing...
What we're replacing is this existing equipment. We're not adding any new pieces.
And what are we doing with the old equipment?
It'll be sold off, auctioned off through the process.
I just get nervous when, it seems like for years, we never got rid of equipment when we replaced it, chief. I just-
You don't like collections?
It'll go up for auction. I'm sure you can bid on it if you want.
No, I don't need a fire truck. Maybe the people on Tuck are not, might want a new one, but, you know, I just, I know-
They seem to accuse me of-
There's a finite space in that building. We have like a million trailers back there and all kinds of stuff. I just, I wanna make sure we're not getting two new ones and not getting rid of the old ones, so.
No.
All right.
New ones are the same size, same physical size. The other ones carry additional water, but-
Are they deuce-and-a-half beds? Is that where they are?
They're five-ton chassis, is the newer version, the FMTVs, the flat-nosed caterpillar diesels.
Yep, good truck.
And I might say, I like the fact, chief, that we're doing this. Instead of buying a new fancy vehicle, we're kinda, you know, fixing something up and making it work, and it's in the spirit of Nantucket, so I appreciate your effort.
No, they won't be parade pieces. They'll get the job done for, you know, we're saving about half a million dollars now between this and the brush breaker. This will be in the town meeting, so.
I like the Hummers.
And the Humvee, yes.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We have some consent items tonight. We have a resignation from the Agricultural Commission. We have a couple of, we have a request for an approval of a, application for a change of officers for the annual all-alcoholic beverage license for Sankey Head, and a request for approval of a new officer directors for the Sankey Head Beach Club. There are no objections, those will be approved. Now we move on to citizens and departmental requests. The first is a request for an approval of change-
Fire.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. We're gonna do something out of order here. One minute, I'm sorry, Mr. Swain. We're gonna get an update on the Fire Department, and the consultant is here, or our OEM?
Our owner's project manager.
OPM.
John.
And he has to get out of here, so we're gonna take him out of order, so.
Good evening. So here tonight, just to give you an update on the station that we briefed you on, I think it was probably a couple months ago now. Things are moving along great. Let's see. Okay, great, thanks. So again, this is the plan. Nothing has changed since we were here last. This you haven't seen, this is a rendering of the Fairgrounds Road side of the facility. Next slide, Greg.
And what's the exterior surrounding the doors made of?
Right now, it's brick. We will get, we, right now, the exterior is brick. It's much like the police station, again, same designer, same finishes, wood painted windows, and again, largely masonry facade. So where are we right now? Schematic design is complete. The design development phase of the project is complete. We've received the design development estimate, which I'll get to in a second. The drawings have been submitted to planning, and we've received no comments to date. We've had preliminary discussions with HDC. There's actually a follow-up meeting with the HDC office tomorrow. The architects will be on island. And the front-end documents for bidding have already been vetted by Town Council, and those comments are being incorporated into the bid set. Next. Because the value of the project was over $10 million, we have to pre-qualify general contractors and subcontractors. Happy to say that we have eight general contractors pre-qualified, which is actually more than we expected, so that's great. Again, there's no guarantee that they'll bid, but at least we have a decent-sized pool. We also pre-qualified approximately 50 subcontractors over the 12 different filed sub-trades that required pre-qualification, and that process will be complete by the end of this week. We had to go back out with the waterproofing trade, because we didn't receive enough responses. Next. Remaining milestones. The drawings are targeted to be available for bidding to those pre-qualified subs and GCs on April 20th. We're gonna receive the filed sub-bids on May 4th, receive the GC bids on May 18th, and then between May 18th and May 31st, contract with the GC, and then issue a notice to proceed on or about May 31st. When we visited you last to talk about budget, this was the breakout of the budget, $14.4 million for construction, with associated designer, OPM, soft cost, and contingency items, for a total of $17 million. And we're happy to report that that $14.4 million, next slide, on the design development estimate has come in right now at $13.2 million. So we're trending in the right direction. That leaves $1.1 million. And part of the project, we had always talked about doing a pre-engineered metal building, or at least the structure for one, a pad or the utilities out back, that's still being scoped out. Clearly, we have enough money. We're hopeful to be able to do that as an alternate, and we will price, we will set it up in the bid documents as an alternate. If we have the money, great. If we don't have it, we won't do it.
I just, $592 a square foot. The bathrooms at Jill and Speech were $833.
Well, the bigger you get, the price goes up.
Well, it's get a bigger bathroom.
Economy of scale.
Easy solution.
So, you know, as of right now, we're on time and we're on budget, and we're moving along.
And just remind us, if we do get that building in back, what's the purpose, storage? What's going on in that building?
Chief?
The purpose was for, we had foam storage in there, marine boat storage, foam trailer storage. I believe the communication command post, police department vehicle was gonna be stored there.
The foam needs to be heated. It can't, it can't be just left out in cold, because it is temperature-sensitive, so.
Just wanna make sure we weren't gonna store those extra-
The extra tankers, right.
Well, you know, you gotta follow up on this, Paul.
So at a bare minimum, let's, at a bare minimum, in the base contract, we'll carry the utilities to go out to that pad, because the concern is, is until you scope and buy the pre-engineered building, sometimes you don't know exactly what the foundation will look like, how that will all tie together. So at least, if we can't afford it, you know, the infrastructure will be there to support it later.
Run all the underground.
Correct, correct.
Could we just go back to your first slide, please? Just, you know, kind of a general comment. I like how we're using as much space compressed as possible. We don't have a lot of land on Nantucket, and I'm sure you're aware, we're, you know, hopefully gonna do some sort of affordable housing project.
Correct.
I just wanna say, you know, if anything we can do to, think about screening, or, you know, just try to make this fit with the neighborhood that's going around, you know, there might be a potential for a road coming in or, you know, something. I'm sure the planning department's aware of that, but we just wanna be conscious of that. It's kind of hard. We don't, we're not planning the whole site together, but if we, if you and Tucker and us, we all work together, we can come up with a better kind of site overall for all the different things.
We were made aware of the potential for the housing.
Great.
And the architects are aware of it.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Is that the end?
That's it. Quick, down and dirty.
No?
More better details as we get towards bidding.
Any questions from anyone?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Don't miss your boat. Okay, now we're going back to citizens departmental requests. We have a request for the approval of a change of manager for an all-alcoholic beverage license for Sankey Head, DBA, the golf course. We're going from Robert Carratech to Mark Kohler. Is that correct?
Good evening. Correct.
Mr. Swain, how are you?
Brian Swain, attorney for Sankey. I'm well, how are you?
Good.
This is your standard, change of manager. The fee's been paid. The applicant has been fingerprinted, and he's here present. Do you have any questions for him?
Mark used to work at the yacht club. I know Mark well.
Make a motion, make a motion to approve. I was pretty straightforward.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck, Mark. All right, the next is a request for an approval of a change of manager for an all-alcoholic beverage license for the Sankey Head Beach Club. Same, same deal, here, right, Mr. Swain?
Correct, however-
Different person.
It's withdrawn.
It is.
Right, it's on next week's agenda.
This is withdrawn, okay. I didn't, I made a note of that and forgot it, I'm sorry. All right, next is a request for a change of, approval of a change of manager for a seasonal wine malt beverage restaurant license for Nantucket Rotary LLC, DBA Lola Burger, from Timothy Smiles to Alexandra Starzick. Is that right?
Correct.
I didn't butcher it, good.
No.
Okay. Pretty straightforward here, Lola Burger, we're changing one manager to the next.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Is that it for you, Brian?
Until the public hearings.
Okay. Now we're gonna move on to the Nantucket Preservation Trust, request for an approval of a preservation restriction to be held by the Nantucket Preservation Trust from Myer Mitchell Association Library at Two Veston Street. And I believe this is probably to do with the money that they got from the CPC.
That is correct.
Sarah?
Sarah Alger for the Mariah Mitchell, and also Jason Leonardo Fingers here from Mariah Mitchell, and Michael May is here from Nantucket Preservation Trust. You did a preliminary review of this back in July, July 8th, I think. We're now here asking that the restriction be signed, so that we can send it up and finalize it with the state.
Any questions? Motion?
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, Housing Nantucket, request for a waiver of sewer connection, sewer privilege fees for two community house units at 18 Tacoma Way. This was tabled two weeks ago. Is someone here from Housing Nantucket?
I know Anne was planning on being here.
All right, we'll put it off for a little bit, and if she doesn't get her by the end of the night, we'll table it again. The next is NCTV. This is a request for a change of designation from our franchise fee recipient from the Nantucket Community Television to the Community Foundation for Nantucket on behalf of the Community, Nantucket Community Television. This is, Nantucket, NCTV has merged or gone under the umbrella of the Community Foundation. I know this, 'cause I'm the appointee to the NCTV, so does anyone have any questions for Lisa?
No, the only question was, NCTV using the Community Foundation for investments prior to this, do you know?
No.
No, we weren't. We met with them, I met with Margaratter, I got the information, brought it back to the board. We discussed it as a board, decided that it was a good fit for us, and went back to NCTV, and here we are.
Right, and this has to do primarily with the tax issue?
Yes.
Right, okay, gotcha.
And, you know, I think at some point, that's all, it's, we make great progress, Rick, in resolving all that.
And we'll get that resolved, right?
And I think that probably within a year, that will be resolved, and we may end up coming back and asking to come out, or we may decide that we wanna leave it there, because it's doing better there than it is under-
Yeah, I understand.
Someone else, so, yes. Any other questions? Motion?
Move approval?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Kingdom Country Productions, County Productions, multiple requests regarding wetware film production on Nantucket, April 11th through May 3rd. Permission to film on town-owned property and approval of various street and road sidewalk blockings, a waiver of the town noise bylaw for multiple dates, times, and locations, and approval of a film permit and a reduction of the fees from $150 to $25 a day. Okay.
Okay, Amy Baxter with Licensing. As we just discussed, we had approval of new film policy and fees a few weeks back, so we'll be applying that. If we look at, there's been a couple changes to this, but basically, what they're asking for is some noise waivers on a couple of dates. Can we push to that, where the noise waivers are? There's gonna be about approximately-
The second page there has the list.
Yeah. They're gonna be in town from, again, let me back up real quick. They were the same production company, if you remember, two years ago, were here for Peter and John, correct?
Correct.
The name, in 2014, by the same time Gray Lady was filmed, two years ago. At that time, it's when we had a former film policy where it was either $0 or $1,000 a day. So they did come in and were granted a $25 a day fee waiver at that time. So it's similar type of production, about 50 people total, not every single day, about four to six vehicles, varying degrees of size, 23-foot truck, couple smaller ones. There are gonna be four days out of the 13, about 13 days where they hit the streets or hit some sort of filming in town, some of the interior, from about April 11th until May 3rd. Four of those involve shooting on streets in the core district. We've worked with police to have details for those days, but there will be some street blocking, some sidewalk blocking on those days, which are listed in the proposal.
Can someone tell me where Cole Alley is?
It's if you're going down Union Street, Bobby, and it's turning, and it's a little left, it goes up to Orange Street.
I've got maps included for all of these locations.
It's just a little, it's like a footpath past the-
Actually, I think that's Stone Alley. I think it's right in between the Knobby Shop and the Starlight.
Backside of the-
Back of the Starlight.
Back of the Starlight, that little-
Yeah, it's near the-
Cut through between the Starlight and Main Street.
The valet, isn't it?
In between the Knobby Shop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's behind Starlight.
Okay, it's 2:00 a.m. Noise to 2:00 a.m. There's no apartments there, or?
There are some, there are some, whether they're there or not, there are a couple, mostly businesses on that one. And I think, some of these dates, I think, have changed, but basically, the locations are the same. It'll be kind of ever-flowing type of situation.
You're gonna be shooting, you're just, you're gonna start, is it, I'm assuming it's a night shoot, is that what you're trying to get at?
Correct, yes.
And are you gonna have an issue with the noise from the theater coming through the building while you're trying to shoot?
No, but we'll be working with the businesses there, and we'll talk to the Starlight and coordinate with them, so that they're aware of what we're doing, and we'll check with their schedule. Hopefully, their noise won't affect us, but we'll work around it as it does.
I believe a lot of noise production is done afterwards sometimes in films, so.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can adjust the sound that we record.
And there's one generator, right, but it's small.
Yeah, we have one generator. It's, it's physically kind of large, but a film generator is generally built to be quieter because of our noise needs than, say, a construction generator or a regular generator. They might hear, it's more of a low hum than a rumble, and so it does create noise, it's noticeable, but it's built to be quiet.
What are your shooting times on Still Dock?
I'm sorry?
Was it Still Dock?
The times for that?
This is 2:00 a.m.
We, our plan is to start there, just as it gets dark, and then move from there over to Cole Alley and finish up there.
Because they are, that is a delivery room for all those restaurants and businesses down there, and they're, they're opening that time of year, so.
Okay, well, hopefully, we would be there late evening, which wouldn't be a-
Yeah, I know, I think all the garbage and everything happens in the morning, so.
Yeah.
Just didn't.
I think, I believe that's a day we have police detail as well, any time that there's any sort of on-street, but maybe not that late.
This one was not one where we were going to block traffic, so we weren't requesting a police detail on this particular day, because Cole Alley and Still Dock are both, well, Cole Alley's an alley, there isn't traffic through it, and Still Dock is essentially a dead-end street, although it leads into some-
You're not going to go out into Easy Street at all?
We would not block traffic on Easy Street. We wouldn't be moving camera or anything out onto Easy Street.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
there isn't traffic through it, and Still Dock is essentially a dead-end street, although it leads into some...
You're not going to go out into Easy Street at all?
Uh, we would not block traffic on Easy Street, we wouldn't be moving camera or anything out onto Easy Street.
Okay. All right, any other questions? So I guess the only issue is, do we give them the waiver from $150 a day to $25 a day?
Right, the category they'd be in would be a not-for-profit shooting, and it's during April to September, which would be the high season into May, so that'd be $150 per day. And again, they were granted that waiver two years ago already, in that exception. So we, as far as how we look at it, there's three different ways we would look at it. Four days where there's absolutely exterior shooting on streets, that would include some of those noise waiver days. If you went up to seven of the days where there's at least a noise waiver request and some parking of these large vehicles in the core district where otherwise you would be ticketed in a 30-minute or one-hour zone. The maximum will be nine days where there's at least some sort of truck or vehicle parking in the core district, that would be the maximum, you know, that would be absolute maximum, which would be $1,300. But I don't think we need to go with that because at that time of year, I don't think it would be too much of an issue. So the minimum would be four days that we would look at.
But what, are you concerned about setting the precedent that everyone will ask for a waiver?
Correct, and we think an exception is an exception, not the rule. So that was granted an exception, but we do understand it's a college that's shooting it, so they're, you know, we can make some, you know, concessions in that sense, is the number of days.
Well...
I don't have a problem with the fact that it's, you know, a university, they've been here in the past. I don't believe we've had any complaints in the past, you know, they conduct themselves well.
The only issue I have is that it's after April 15th, it's when we start ticketing downtown and people can't park more than the limited amount, and they're taking up spaces that are, I think, one-hour parking for the entire day, or a good part of the night, so I think they got to pay something for that.
Yeah.
Are we concerned about it going into, it's going into Daffodil Weekend?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we've, Daffodil Weekend is that final weekend that there, we're there, April 30th, May 1st, and on those days we are shooting interiors, I mean, we did that deliberately to avoid anything that would be outside or blocking.
But where are your trucks going to be?
Uh, we're working, we're shooting in the American Legion Hall and we're working with the company that parks in the valet lot across the old power plant lot, and we're working with them to get permission to park our trucks in there, which I believe at that time of year is not used publicly, and so we're in contact with them, we haven't got that confirmed yet, but we're hoping to do it.
I want a stipulation that that weekend, that they not park on any street.
Right.
That they have to park, and that includes the Washington Street Lot and...
Correct.
You know, down by Charlie Sales.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely, and they did meet with us, with the town manager and with police to kind of work out different options, so that's why they're looking for that, but absolutely.
And on, that would be Saturday and Sunday, correct? Those would be the two days you're talking about?
Yeah.
Sounds reasonable, Bobby.
So we had, options were four, seven, and nine, Amy, that's what you gave us?
Correct, and I think nine is the extreme, and I think some of this parking is, we've got them in the two-hour zone where that's not really being ticketed, as long as it's not during that weekend. So between four and seven, and again, it's going to change, so we'll have to keep an eye on that.
Do I have a motion from anyone? Or a suggestion?
I'll make a motion, then we go with four days of $25 and the stipulation that...
Four days at the regular rate.
Yeah, it would be at the regular...
Versus...
Well, versus, it would be, what was the total, 30 days at $150?
Yeah.
Well, no, they, it's a maximum of 13 days that they're actually doing something within the town, but four of those days are interior shooting, and where we're parking the vehicles would be outside of the actual core district, two-hour plus parking, so I felt like that wasn't, they weren't really impacting anything on those days, so that it was reasonable to come down to maximum of nine days. Some of those days are just when they have a noise waiver request and that sort of thing, where there'd be some impact. Two of those days are at a private home on Holbert that I think it's not going to be a problem at the 73 Holbert, that's not going to be a problem, so that's where I came down to seven days.
You're recommending seven days?
Seven days where there's exterior shooting, where we have some details, where there's noise waivers and downtown parking.
And what are you suggesting for the daily fee on those seven days?
It's set for at $150 would be what the policy is.
And that fee is the nonprofit fee? Right. So, that was the, that was what we adopted a couple of months ago, right?
Correct.
So just to be clear, that's different from what it...
Their, well, their request in the 25, because that's what they did two years ago, so that's...
Okay, and our recommendation is to do, in effect, seven days at the $150?
Either seven or four. That's the, those are the low ends. The four, low end would be the four, the high end would be the nine, the middle would be the seven.
I'll make a motion, then we do...
Six, seven?
Seven days at $150 and stipulation, no parking on Saturday and Sunday at Daffodil Weekend.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. All right, now we're going to move on to the public hearing section of the evening, we're going to have a public, I'm going to open a public hearing to consider a petition from Verizon Communications Plan MA 2016-2 to install approximately 650 of a one-four-inch PVC conduit and associated service pedestals from Bosnaf Eastley along northerly side of Montemoy Road.
I'm going to recuse...
Removing five poles.
Accusing.
You're accusing?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, Tom Stanton, representing Verizon Communications.
Mr. Stanton, you said, this is the magic word, removing poles. We never have a problem when we're removing poles, so this is a public hearing. Does anyone have to, want to make any comments on this, from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'm surprised Nat didn't want to show up and tell me the poles are historic.
Does anyone have any discussion on this?
So just to be clear, the wires here are going to go underground?
Yes, sir.
650 feet of them.
Yep, good.
And, and this is, I assume, being paid for privately by the owners in the area?
Yes, it is.
Great, thank you.
And what's the, do you know offhand what the cost is for putting those wires in?
I, I do not, no.
Sarah, I see a hand in the back.
Yeah, I represent the property owner, as you may recall, I was here back when Comcast and National Grid was here. I believe we paid approximately $180,000 to get rid of the poles. That doesn't include the undergrounding of the wires to the various private homes.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Comments, questions, motions?
Move approval?
The more of this type of activity, the better.
All right, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much. Now we have a public, I'm going to open a public hearing to consider an application for a new common VIC license for RJ Diamond, Inc., DBA AK Diamonds, Richard Diamond, Manager, for the premises located at 16 Macy's Lane. I don't see anyone here from Mr. Diamond's establishment, but this is a pretty straightforward...
So he's redoing the second floor, it looks like.
Well, they had, they had the major flood, and they took everything out, and they've rearranged the restaurant now so that there are some apartments on the second floor, the kitchen's still up there, the dining room and the bar are downstairs now, so they're just downstairs. So this is the common VIC, is there anyone from the public who'd like to make comment on this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Motion?
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. The next is a public hearing, consider an application for alteration of the premises for the annual all-alcoholic beverage license for the same location, AK Diamonds, Richard Diamond, Manager. Any comments from the public on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions, motion?
And scale down from what they had originally, Bobby, so I think it makes sense, and wish them the best of luck, and glad they're going to be open again.
Uh, do I have a motion?
Uh, motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the next is a public hearing, assume an application for a new annual wine malt beverage restaurant license for Nobachi, Inc., DBA Sushi By Yoshi, Terrence Knowles, Manager. Terry, I see you in the background, if you want to come up, in case we have any questions. This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that has comments or questions about this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Looks like I'm going to be able to, not enough to bring my own bottle of wine anymore, Terry? Is that what you're hoping here?
I think, what Yoshi and I plan on still allowing you to bring your own and not really, not charging a corkage...
I don't think you can do that.
No, that's not allowed once you have a liquor license, BYO.
Well, I'm sorry to say, Bobby, you won't be able to.
That's fine, I don't mind buying it from you, it's a pain in the ass, I got to go to the liquor store, then I got to come back, I'd rather just get it from you, Terry.
Yeah, it's been 23 years, you know, we've been there, and one of our concerns was is that Murray's was the beverage store that we send our customers to get, was for sale, and that wouldn't leave many options to purchase retail liquor for us. And just going forward, another way, just to try to get a little bit of revenue in those short months of profitability.
I don't blame you on that.
We still will be closing at 10:00 PM, and we're not really going to have a bar, it'll be more or less a service bar with a push-top bottle, you know, bottle refrigerator, so we're not looking to get into the bar business at all.
Good to hear. This is a public hearing, is anyone from the public want to make comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions, motion?
I think it's, you know, it's nice to see a small business, you know, they're not going to be a bar, you know, it's just wine and malt, so, you know, established business, reputable, so I'm fine with giving them a go-ahead, and I'd make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Terry.
Thanks so much.
Where am I now?
Number six.
Yep. Public hearing to consider an application for a new annual all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license.
Number five, sorry.
That's where I'm at.
Yeah.
License for J ETC LLC, DBA as Orrin Moore Bistro. John, I'm going to butcher this last name.
Tancinco.
Tancinco, thank you. Manager of premises located at two, so Sarah, they surrendered their seasonal, and now they want an annual?
Well, the restaurant has changed hands.
Ah.
So the new owners are John Tancinco, who's here, as well as Ned Clavlin. You may know Ned, he went to, was born here and grew up here, and is now back, they're going to run Orrin Moore. And so they're now, that old license expired at the end of the year, so they're applying for their new annual.
Okay. This is a public hearing, does anyone in the public have comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions for the board? Seeing none?
Seems like it could have been transferred, or...
Don?
Are they actually planning on being open year-round? Or closing for two months in the winter?
Yeah, we just, we weren't...
What are you thinking?
Thank you. We just didn't want to live it ourselves, you know, with the new business, we just figured hedge the bets we plan on.
Let's talk about that a little bit, because if you get an annual license, you can't just close for two months. I think it's four days is max, so if you want to close for a month or two, you're going to want to withdraw this and get a seasonal liquor license, which is from April to December 31st. Because that's part of, that's part of the issue that we're having with these year-round licenses is you're allowed to close occasionally with permission to do maintenance or repairs, but you just can't decide, there's not enough business, so I'm going to close for February and March with a year-round license. If you want to do that, you might want to withdraw this application and put in for a seasonal. Right, Sarah?
May I confer?
Yeah. We can, we can, we can table this if we have to, and, or we can withdraw it, or, but that's an important distinction that I think people need to know.
And, you know...
Mr. Diamond?
Yeah.
We already did you.
Thank you.
You're all approved.
It should be so quick, I can't believe it.
We're trying to be efficient. But you're welcome to stay. I think I was right, wasn't it four days, Amy? Four consec, more, no more than four consecutive days?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you just push us till the end and we'll go out and talk about it?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm going to leave the public hearing open for this one, we'll, we'll come back to it, so...
Just a general comment on that, will they go out? I, I think we all know, there's, there's a fair amount of maintenance that takes a certain amount of time for some folks, and that's fine, I'm not complaining, but it's, it's not, I'm not sure how to put it this way. I, I think we don't mind accommodating that as a community, is that a way to put it?
Well, yeah, but you can't accommodate it for two months every winter, is I guess, if you want that, you should get the seasonal, it's really, it's not that much of a difference.
We just might sort of pay attention to some of these that are, that are closing with a fair amount of regularity for maintenance.
I think it's important to note, too, that the license...
Have they been coming in for approval from us on their license, or...
No, many years ago, the board established a policy that more than three consecutive days required approval by the board, they subsequently turned that over to the town manager, so I basically sign off on them. Now, if somebody's in, closing for three months, I usually put a little note on there, "This is quite a long time, please don't make it a habit," something like that, but I don't know how I would say, "No, you can't close."
Well, I understand, but I'm just going by Bobby's comment, which I think was an important one.
It's routine for...
And makes us think, maybe rethink how routine six weeks is, or I don't know what the number is.
Well, I think that we need to start really tracking this a little more, and if they're continuously closing for a month or more, then we need to visit their license the next time they renew it and say, "Maybe you should change to a seasonal." The other option is, is that just because you have a seasonal license that ends on the 31st of December, you can come to this board and request an extension of that seasonal license, am I correct, Amy?
No, no.
You can't do that?
It's statutory.
Oh, it's statutory.
Isn't it January, isn't it like January 15th?
It's January 15th, April 1st to January 15th.
It's April 1st to January 15th, so it pretty much covers, it covers New Year's, it covers Stroll, or Daffodil.
And we have the tracking for all restaurant closings for the past, you know, six, seven years, whatever, so.
Yeah, most, most of the time, they try to work among themselves, so that there's a couple open, I mean, that would...
Yes.
Well, I think that used to be more formal than it is today.
Well, it used to be that nobody wanted to be open, but now everybody wants to be open.
Since we were to negotiate to get them open.
The reason I bring it up is I do get comments from the ones that really try to stay open all the time about how come so-and-so got to close for six weeks, you know?
That's why I wanted to follow up.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a good point.
Where, where was I? Sorry, I'm on number six. Public hearing, I'm open to public hearing to consider an application for a new annual all-alcoholic beverage license, hotel license for Pharaoh 17 Broad Street LLC, Alexander Leventhal, Manager, for the premises located at 17 Broad Street. This one you too, Sarah?
Yes, and this is all year-round, they're going to try it for a year and see how it goes.
Because the inn's going to be open year-round?
Because the inn's going to be open year-round. If it doesn't work out, we'll be back asking for a different license next year.
Okay.
Mr. Leventhal unfortunately had a family funeral, so the general manager, Jeff David, is here with me and can answer any questions that you might have, but this is the new restaurant, which will be in the old Collins property, which is going to be doing business as Great House.
So, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that wants to make comments or ask questions? Seeing none, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? What are the hours of operation going to be? Because I know their neighbors backing right up to that.
Right, well, they're going, because of the location of the, where the restaurant is in the building, we're not anticipating difficulty with the residences, we've been working with them fairly closely. It is going to be breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and we'd like to be able to go, you know, from the more, obviously, we can't serve alcohol until, what is it, like 11 o'clock?
Until 1:00.
Until 1:00.
And is there outside service here?
No, there is not.
Okay. So that, that helps. It's all inside. There are three tables on the porch, those want to be serviced, those are just...
Under our planning board decision, we're not allowed to serve, do any outdoor service. We do want to be able to do room service.
Okay. Okay, the public hearing has been closed, questions, comments, or a motion?
Bobby, I just had some concerns about, you know, it turning into a bar, it sounds like those, it's not going to be outside, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, I felt very strongly about, you know, the town trying to move forward and create a more positive atmosphere for young people and get things to do at the night, but this seems like they're trying to be conscientious of that, and the planning board has heard that, and kind of...
I look at this sort of, a lot like the Nantucket Hotel, I mean, they do have guests in there.
Right, we do have...
They're trying to sleep, so they're not going to be allowed crazy...
Yeah, no, I understand.
Motion to approve.
Motion's made to approve, is there a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Next is a public hearing to consider the application for a new annual all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license for 45 Surfside Road LLC, doing DBA 45 Surfside Road, uh, Surfside. Rebecca Moseinger, Manager of the premises located at 45 Surfside Road. This, this request for determination, we also need a request for termination of the premises is not detrimental to the education or spiritual activities of the church or school. This is within a kind of beautiful school. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andrew Upton, representing the applicant. Just a brief word about the character and fitness of the applicant. Rebecca Mersinger is the sole owner, the sole investor. She is about to become an island resident in order to pursue her dream of opening 45 Surfside Road. Previously, she was the owner-operator of the Conde De Meister Bakery in Braintree. She was there for 25 years, it was quite well-known and well-regarded for high-end pastries and cakes. She is tips-trained and serve-safe-trained, as will all the staff who work there be. We are looking to do a year-round concept, we believe it's unique in the area. We have support from the directive orders across the street in the form of supportive email. Ms. Mersinger has also reached out to a number of school principals and administrators with personal emails describing the concept, just trying to get to know the neighbors and making sure they're comfortable with the, with the concept, and we have several reply emails which seem to view it positively. The food will be fresh, it will be family-friendly, it will be reasonably priced, there will be adequate parking, there will be no bar, there will be no shots, no pitchers, no cigarettes, no lottery, no dancing, except on rare occasions where people really want to celebrate the food or some special occasion. There'll be bike racks, there'll be take-out picnic meals, and they are talking to Bike Nantucket as a, to affiliate with a charity, because that's something she likes to do with all her businesses. That being said, we're glad to answer any questions.
Is there outside seating?
I'm going to abstain, Bobby, because there could be a competitor.
Okay. Is there outside seating?
There is outside seating in front.
And did you plan to serve alcohol outside?
Uh, we would like to, yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who wishes to make comment or questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, aspect, Amy?
Yes, so there are some concerns, particularly, speaking from the police department, being very close to the elementary school, absolutely, there would be opposition to the sale, delivery, and consumption of alcoholic beverages on the patio, first and foremost, and then in general, having alcohol at something that's essentially a bakery. Sandwiches across from the school opening, I believe the latest that they're open is 9:00 PM, if I'm correct. The same hours the school's open and that type of activity, it doesn't seem to fit with what they're doing. It's similar to, I think, the application last year for like Lemon Press, which does a similar type of business, that, that application was denied as well for alcohol, so there is concern with issuing this to that type of facility in that location.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep.
I think the, we certainly understand those comments, but I, I think the commenters disregarding the fact that it's, it's not just soup and sandwiches, there are a variety of meals, cakes, we look to have events, of meals, cakes, we look to have events, special events, catering, hot food, shared plates, fish dishes, steak, it's not just soup and sandwiches, just to be, to be clear.
For a special event, they could get a special pouring license?
No.
Or no?
If they did not have a liquor license at that facility, they could not, if they have a liquor license, they could not get any sort of temporary permit for the premises, and if they're catering, they don't have a, they would need a catering liquor license to provide liquor, they can't use whatever liquor license they have to cater events off premises.
Right.
So, on premises is a different situation.
We, we understand that, we're talking about events.
You're calling this as a, you're calling this a bakery café, but it's actually, it's a bakery restaurant. You're gonna have a full menu, is what you're saying, the dinner menu with like fish and steaks and burgers and-
Yes, specials.
Yeah, so, so you're gonna do pastries in the morning, you'll do a lunch menu with pastries and soups, and you always have pastries probably, cause you're a pastry chef and, God, I love pastries, so anyway, but then you'll have dinner, you'll have a dinner menu, you'll have a lunch menu, you'll have, you'll have a breakfast menu, is that sort of what you're saying?
That's right.
Cause we, when we looked at this, it was difficult to interpret what you were doing, it sort of sounded like it was a, a bakery that wanted to serve alcohol. So, I just wanna make sure that it's a restaurant that also does bakery.
No, it's a café, so essentially, it, it's a café, we serve coffee, Danish breads, breakfast items, muffins, that sort of thing, goes into lunch, sandwiches, soups, salads, that sort of thing, and then light-type dinners, yes. And essentially, the, the beer and wine type thing is mom and dad, it's evening, early evening, and they wanna come and have a little bite to eat and relax, allow neighbors in the back.
And just, we haven't seen an entertainment license from you yet, so I'm just gonna ask the questions because these two sort of tie together. What are your, your plans for music? Do you plan on trying to have live music or just light, light amplified background music, or maybe a TV, something like that?
Delphal, the TV, probably not, definitely not, entertainment, but yes, we would have some background music, won't be Taylor Swift or anything, something slightly jazzy and that sort of thing, a little high-end, so everybody's comfortable. I love Taylor Swift, she's great, but not so much for this concept.
So, do you expect there will be takeout here? People might come and pick up a meal to take home or a sandwich to take out?
Yes.
But, but alcohol would not leave the premise if we granted the license, just to be clear.
Of course not. I can see people stopping on their way to Surfside on the bike to grab something for the beach and maybe have a beer and keep right on going.
Yeah.
I, I confer with what the police department says here, that I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't condone any kind of outside service, I wouldn't have a problem with it inside, but it is close to the school.
At the very least, no service on the patio would be requested.
So, if you were sitting down at a table inside, having a lunch or dinner, you'd be allowed to have wine or beer? Is this for more than wine and beer or just wine or beer?
No, it's all alcohol.
This is all alcohol.
Well, we did the same thing with the Rotary when it was, before it became-
Lola Burger.
Lola Burger, then we said no outside service.
It's just a little further away from the school, I mean, and I, it's, anyway, I understand.
My, you know, just some of my thoughts, gentlemen, I, you know, you know, I agree, I don't like the idea of having it being served, you know, any alcohol being served outside, I agree with the police chief. I don't like the idea of all-alcoholic for this kind of establishment, I think it's appropriate to have beer and wine, I just, you know, sometimes all-alcoholic and things can get a little more interesting, and that's just how I feel personally, but if people wanna grab a, a beer with, you know, their dinner or lunch, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, the application before is just for an all-alcoholic, so I think we should act on that, and then if we don't approve it, then they wanna come back, they can, but is there any other questions from the board?
Not at the moment, Bobby.
I don't have a question, I was just, I was very surprised when I saw this, because I was, I was very excited about this place going in by the school that I thought was a café, and the whole concept has changed for me. And I, I agree with Tobias, that I don't think it should be a full liquor license, I think beer and wine would be reasonable. I mean, my preference would be that it would be limited to the evening, but-
This is close to the Muse, just so I got where we are here.
It's, uh, it's, it's across the street, it's the old health club.
And that was the new school.
So, it's right behind, if you're coming up Barla Road, it's right behind where Paul's Corner used to be.
Ah, I got, so it's, so it's, so it's on the other side of the street from the Muse?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, for lack of any motion coming from, I'm gonna make one so that we can at least have a vote, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this liquor license with the stipulation that no alcohol be served before 11:00 in the morning, and that no alcohol be served outside. Do I have a second for discussion, or no?
No.
No, no, no? All right, then, somebody else give me a motion.
Can we just, just to open up a little bit to the wine and beer, in other words, I think you might, I don't, I shouldn't speak for others, but more receptivity if you came for a wine and beer license and not an all-alcohol license given your location?
Um, yes.
And you may wanna think about that, so.
Essentially, the reason for the, the all-alcohol was this, if somebody, a few people came, maybe neighbors in the back, and they said, let's have a small, a couple of people here to sit down and gather and get together and all of that, maybe it's a small birthday or this or that, and they sit down and they have this function, and then they say, well, you know, Uncle Joe likes this drink or that sort of thing, that's essentially what it is, so.
No, I understand.
The concept is essentially people sitting and relaxing and-
I'm just making a suggestion to you, they can relax with beer and wine and not all alcohol.
Not a full bar.
So, and you may find, speaking for myself, more receptivity in granting the license given the other concerns about the location, so.
It, I mean, then, that makes perfect sense, that piece of it, the all-alcohol piece, quite frankly, is not a big thing, it's, could easily go away with that.
Can we amend this right here, Amy, to a, to a-
They would have to resubmit for a beer and wine.
Hopefully, that's not difficult to do, I mean, I would suggest you do that, that would be my recommendation.
So, I, I made a motion to approve, didn't get a second, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny then, in the spirit that hopefully you'll come back, and, you know, I think you've heard some of these kind of scaled down, no on the patio.
We have a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three to one, the application is denied.
Right, but I hope you do understand the, the flavor in which we issued the denial, and we certainly hope you'd come back for a, a beer and wine license and open the facility in that way.
Oh, absolutely, and I honestly, I think you would love the concept, which you sit down, have a sandwich and a nice Cisco beer.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna open a public hearing to consider a 2016 seasonal liquor license renewals, seasonal entertainment license renewals, and junk dealer license renewals. This is all of them together, Amy?
Yes.
And do we pull the bad apples out?
As far as, I, I think we include our violation list for you too, to kind of look what happened last year.
But I don't think they've suggested not renewing anybody, Bobby.
Yeah, no, there's, there's nothing that I believe, they're all in the process. Right now, they have the month of March to sign off on the renewals, so they're in the process right now of doing that, so.
I just wanna add, Chief, the gray lady, did they drop their, they dropped their appeal, right? They're gonna serve their suspension?
Correct.
And nobody else, of all the suspensions that we gave, nobody's appealing them or any of that? Cause that would be grounds for me not to renew their license if they were being difficult.
I think they saw the light, Bobby.
Okay.
Yes, they've been communicating with us.
I think you've got their attention.
Yes.
This is a public hearing, does anyone have any comments on any of these licenses? And there are a few.
I'm a bit curious for many of those.
Rhoda, come on up.
Good evening, I have comments on two of them, I'd like to start with the Summer House, I know you've heard from me, for, for those of you that have been around for a while, I've had restrictions put on that license over 20 years ago, we continue to have problems with them, we've had noise complaints, we've had, there was a couple of provisions on the license, one of them was that they were supposed to notify me as a representative of the butters when they were gonna have private functions, they are allowed to have a limited number of private functions, I got two notices last summer, they had several more than that, they were also supposed to give us a cellphone number where my clients could call someone, and that didn't work, so I wanna make sure, and I've talked to Amy about this, and I feel reassured that that's gonna be handled, but I wanna make sure that there's something on the license, A, that says that they will notify someone, preferably Amy or somebody in the police department, when they're gonna have private functions, it certainly doesn't have to be me, but my clients wanna know about it, and we wanna know that there's a cellphone that clients can call where they're gonna get a response, because it's scance it, if they call the police department, sometimes it takes considerable amount of time to get there, and it would be helpful just to have a cellphone. So, those are my two comments on that one.
Yes, and, and we spoke, and, and I agree, a lot of these licenses do have restrictions, varying degrees of reporting, of reporting, and we wanna make that more consistent in that they all report into the licensing, licensing department, the police department, namely me, and-
And we want that all printed on the license on the premises.
Absolutely, we've redone all the licenses, yes, yes, we've redone all the licenses, starting with the annuals, to have all this information readily available on it, and then be consistent with the reporting process being to me, and then I branch out to Rhoda and the like, and the butters-
Okay.
From there.
And what was the other one, Rhoda?
The other one is Met on Main, and I represent the butters on Met on Main, I know there have not been three verified police, police complaints, but my client has made nine complaints, some of them directly to the restaurant, to the restaurant managers, they've had a couple of managers, the problem with that is the noise level on the patio, Amy and I have talked about that as well, I believe she's come up with a compromise, the compromise is helpful and we appreciate it, it doesn't really satisfy my client, who doesn't want any speakers on the patio at all, he didn't find that the management, and even the new manager, has been very cooperative, basically, the response he gets is, we're running a business, we need to have music, and that really doesn't work for us, so if the board feels that they want to approve the license with the conditions that Amy's recommending, which I believe is a 9:30 close for the, well, she can go through them, but I believe it was a 9:30 close on the patio with speakers with a timer on there, and the, you know, the one thing that we, I didn't see on the list, but what we talked about was a cellphone number, you know, I guess that's up to the board, I would hope that they don't allow any music outside at all, and I would ask if they do approve, if you deem it appropriate to approve it with her restrictions, I would ask that we can come back here if there's one verified complaint, not wait for three more, because there, this has been ongoing now since they opened, and to start all over again and wait for three verified complaints really isn't gonna be very helpful, so if you deem it appropriate to approve it with the restrictions that Amy will read to you, then I would ask that if there's one verified noise complaint this season, that we can come back and ask you to remove speakers altogether.
So, just a brief history, we started this discussion back during the annual renewals, at the time, they were still an annual, and then asked to continue so that we can make some sort of compromise and come back, since they are now a seasonal operation, and I'll have Brian Swain will speak in a second, representing Met on Main. They have had complaints over the past three years at least, I read through them, there have been some police reports on those, but unfortunately, what she means by verified is by the time the police officer did arrive, music had been turned off or there wasn't, you know, what they're reporting was not occurring anymore, so that technically is not verified in the bylaws, I think that is the recommendation, that there be three verified complaints, so absent of that, we couldn't pull a license or have her restrictions. What we've discussed is, the client has agreed to 9:30, pulling it back, right now it's 10:00 PM, two speakers maximum on the patio, separate from the indoor entertainment thing, which is another subject, 9:30, having automatic timers on the speakers, making sure we have the speakers pointed away from the butters, that it's towards the building itself, you know, having a preseason meeting with them, possibly a vegetation issue where, you know, you have some sort of noise abatement with, with landscape here, that sort of thing, which I think they're doing at the Brotherhood, so giving them some compromise and that if there is one problem, if there is a verified complaint, that they are brought back in. We did have other issues with them indoors, they have a non-amplification license for indoors, I do have photographic evidence that that was not adhered to last summer, there weren't reports, but I know it did go on, so there, you know, I think there's some backing to these complaints, however, I think there should be a compromise before they're completely removed, but again, I ask them to come and ask for that.
I have no problem putting on this license and putting your client on notice, Mr. Swain, that we have one issue this year, one issue with outside noise after 9:30, one issue with amplified music inside that building, and the entertainment license is gonna get yanked. All right? We've been through this three years in a row with these people, this was never meant to be a nightclub, and that's what they're trying to make it into after 10:00, and you know, to turn the speakers off outside and have amplified music inside with that back door open and the two windows open, might as well just put it on the patio, and that's a residential neighborhood, it's the upper edge of Main Street, I got no problem with them serving breakfast and lunch and dinner, but when they start cranking the music, that's where I have a problem.
Okay.
Got it?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Could we add the cellphone also on there?
Please put the cellphone, and, um-
Me, probably, would be the best person.
It'll probably be Amy, but-
Yeah, I would be the best person.
Cause I have walked by there as well and seen amplified music in there and went, hmm, I don't remember approving that, so.
And a DJ ad.
Yeah, they, they were advertising DJ, I, I don't have photos of the DJ, but the fire department did go on, actually in August, and say, you don't have a license for this, stop advertising, so.
I mean, your, your client's on eggshells, basically, is what I'm saying.
Being a good neighbor is important to him, and he's hired a new full-time manager to come down here, and I've really reiterated, reiterated to him how important this is to the board and the neighborhood, so.
Hopefully, this manager understands that the last two didn't, so.
Okay.
And then, Amy, one quick question, all these entertainment licenses that we have, I don't-
Yes.
When do we renew them? And I know a lot of them have, like, the Brotherhood has a stipulation from the planning board-
Correct, I, I read that decision this week.
We put, I think we told the JC, they couldn't play till, till what, till 11:00 outside, I mean-
11.
Do we approve these again, or do they-
Yeah, so here's what, and I know there was some confusion the way this was worded.
Thank you, Mr. Swain.
Historically, what you've done is approve entertainment and CB licenses as annual licenses, and then the annual liquor licenses in December, and then at this time of year, you renew the seasonal liquor licenses. The way I kind of worded it this year was that you're renewing these licenses, these restaurants should, all their licenses should be at the same time, because we don't really contact them in December, it's just that you did, you did do a blanket renewal in December. The thought is, moving forward, they should be treated as, you know, Station 21, it should be their seasonal liquor entertainment and CB.
Everything for the-
Yeah, correct, cause you, you don't really, they're all off-island, you don't really contact them until this time of year to deal with the liquor portion, and the entertainment and the liquor are, you know, attached, really, they really do, so.
They really should be here together, because it's, you know, you're approving a liquor license and you don't know the hours of operation, or what the entertainment's gonna be.
Correct.
And like Tobias said, a lot, I have no problem with, with the restaurant that wants to serve somebody a glass of wine or even a vodka-
Right.
With dinner, but a nightclub is a whole different animal.
Especially being a public hearing, people are more likely to, you know, if they had comments to do so, when the liquor license got renewed.
So, when we renewed all these licenses this year in bulk?
Yes.
Did somebody physically go through them and make sure that the restrictions that were on those entertainment licenses got carried forward?
Yes.
Or the comments that we made through the year about changes to them got carried forward?
Yes, yes, all of that, and they've been all rewritten, and a lot more information is contained on them to make it easier to go in and understand what is allowed, and those decisions, the Brotherhood one I did read, so that one is gonna have to be formally changed.
And then we should also- And then we should also.
And approved by you.
Also check the, whatever we approved for the patio at the Jarrett Coffin, because I thought we said the same thing up there, like 10 or 11.
Yeah, I believe 11.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's on that one, because that one, I've gone by there late and it's still there.
Yes, yes, I think there was one time a complaint was made about the Brotherhood and it was actually, that, you can't tell the difference.
Right.
You know, just on the Brotherhood as well, Amy, you know, I've heard a lot of complaints about the big TV outside. You know, I personally don't think it's in good taste.
Right. The Brotherhood or the Jared?
The Jared Coffin.
Yeah, because it faces the street, yeah, there are issues, and especially with HDC, as far as that. You can see it, it's a commercial, you can see commercials and that sort of thing technically would be in violation of that.
So can we ask them to change the, change it to, turn it 90 degrees?
You, I don't think, the way the bar is set up, that wouldn't work, but you'd have to make a ruling on that. There have been many complaints, and I do go to the sign advisory committee with HDC.
I just can't believe that NIR doesn't know this clearly.
They do.
And step in and just take some action.
I frequent the bar a lot, and I like the TV. So I sit at the bar, and I watch a baseball game, and I have a drink at the end of the day, and it's relaxing.
Right.
You know, I, this is my thought on this. We start with TVs on outside patios and bars, and the next thing you know, you're telling me I can't have one in my dining room window, because you can see it from the street.
It's the commercial, technically.
This one is a unique spot. You come down Center Street, that's all you see. And it's easy to modify and fix that, so it doesn't have the same visual impact.
I think if you read the bylaw or whatever for that, what it is, is it's fine when it's not a commercial. It's like telling a real estate agent, you can't have video in your window advertising something, correct? So when the football game's on, hey, it's fine, but technically, once that commercial comes on, it's violation.
Mr. Chairman?
That would be how I would read that.
Couple things. Number one, Met on Main actually didn't make it onto this list, so we should make sure that we say it so that it's approved as a seasonal license. Secondly, the entertainment licenses have already been renewed. And we need to have some additional internal discussion about how we would separate annual from seasonal, because statutorily, they're, for the calendar year, they're one license approved annually. So if we want to make any changes to any individual licenses, at this point, I think you'd need to have a public hearing to address it. And this issue of the TV has come up several times, and I'm not sure that it's violating any particular bylaw, which doesn't mean that we couldn't actively, that doesn't mean we have to allow it out there.
So, but we're doing seasonals tonight, correct?
Seasonal liquor licenses.
Seasonal liquor really only.
Yeah, so we need to vote to include Met on Main in the seasonal list.
Correct, they switch to seasonal.
So there's, I'll make a motion to include Met on Main in this list.
That's right.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, okay. So that's included in the list now. So now we need to vote, well, we're all, is there any more public comment? Rota had hers. See, now I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll move for a motion to approve all the seasonal liquor licenses.
Bobby, just before we do that, and I don't have a problem with that. You know, I would suggest that we put a public hearing to put Nantucket Prime, or the JC, or whatever it is, and have this issue addressed in regards to the TV.
So you can't do that with a liquor license. That's an entertainment license, and we did those in December, that's what Libby's saying.
No, I understand.
So we'd have to wait till next December.
Well, but if you want to do something in the interim, I think you could schedule a public hearing. But you just can't do it without one.
No, no, I understand that, Libby, thank you. Sounds good to me, so. Just wanted to say that.
So do we want to, let's get these approved, and then we'll go. We'll get, we'll.
Move approval.
We'll bring that back under comments.
Correct.
Motion's been made to approve the seasonal liquor licenses, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we're going to go back to.
Did you do the junk licenses too?
Oh, we.
Amy, are those junk license things?
I need a motion to approve the junk licenses. So this is a renewal of seasonal liquor licenses, and I also need, I need a motion to approve the junk dealer license. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, that takes care of it. Now we're going to go back to Sarah. What is, what's the decision?
I have conferred with my clients, since the license goes through December of 2016, that's when they're planning to be open, they're going to keep the license as it is. We'll see how it goes. If they need to for next year, they'll go back to a.
So they're not planning to open until this December?
No, they're opening in, they're opening as soon as they get their license in April. But the license goes through December, so they're going to be open through December, so.
Oh, and then when they, they can either decide in January not to renew.
They can either decide to renew, or they can apply for a new.
Okay, okay.
Took us a little while to work that out.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oh, hold on. I'm going to close the public hearing, because I kept it open. Now we can, I'll do the vote again. Made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, thank you for your patience.
Good luck, thank you.
Now I'm going to go back to, to Housing Nantucket, because I see Anne's here, so. We were moving so fast, Anne, we got ahead of you. We have a request for a waiver of sewer connection and sewer privileges for two community housing units on 18 Tacoma Way. By, by information, this is the lot that we gave to Housing Nantucket up the street here, had no charge to build affordable housing units. And now they're asking for a waiver of the sewer connection fee and the sewer privilege fee, which tunes to about, it's $8,500 per unit?
I believe it's $8,200.
$8,200, $8,200 per unit.
The first slide. Yeah, no. That's page four.
I think we can cut to the chase here. The issue for us is the shy.
That's right.
And if, and I'm going to tell you what I feel, Anne, and the rest of the board can chine in, but if they don't go on the shy, you don't get them for free. We need every house to be on the shy. We gave you the land, understand there's some issues, and you need something from us, but whatever you need, we'll give you, letterwise. And I want every house that we're, we're using our land for, or giving our land for, to go on the shy. And that, if that's, if that doesn't work, then we may have to renegotiate these fees.
Yeah, Bobby, I think just to follow up on that. To me, the issue goes back to the 40B situation, and this is related to that. And I think we owe it to the community to be absolutely clear on what we expect to happen, and how it impacts 40Bs in the future. So I feel strongly as well on that subject.
I think, I think it's important, too, we have to move towards meeting our shy numbers, to do it more under our terms. Anne and I spoke earlier today, and I think that we just, we kind of need to go over the part that the town needs to play in the process, because it's, it's like a yearly renewal, and I think she wanted to detail that.
Bobby, if I may, you know, I definitely agree with you, and I think we need to get these things, all these housing units on the shy list. But I would note that I think there's a lot of housing on Nantucket that doesn't count towards the shy list, that a lot of people would think. And I think part of, part of our frustration is, has to do with the state's, you know, laws regarding 40B. You know, and I think we should let our, let our elected officials know that these are a concern for us, and they don't necessarily make sense. I think Housing Nantucket is trying to put people in affordable housing that makes sense for the community. Or, you know, I think Anne does a good job of getting a diverse, you know, qualified group of people who really need housing. And to add a onerous bureaucratic procedure on it, you know, to get things on the shy list, it just seems, you know, silly to me. But I do understand, Bobby, your concerns about getting everything on the shy list, so that we can move forward on dealing with 40B. I just think maybe there's a compromise where we can make this waiver the time being. And in the future, we work towards with Housing Nantucket to get these on the shy list. You know, I know they're here asking now, but I think it's important that we get people in these, you know, units moving forward to live there. And that's just how I feel. The housing crisis is now, it's not, it's also dealing with the 40B, but they're, it's not just outright one or the other.
I'd like to hear what the responsibility of the town is, you know, what is difficult with it, and what's the responsibility of the town. I'd love to have Anne discuss that.
Great. First, just want to say, we are all on the same side here. So I want to help in any way that's possible, and I appreciate the help that you've given us so far to waive the sewer fees, because it means a great deal to us, especially since we're using CPC funds to pay for these. So it just makes more sense for us all to work together towards the same goals. So when I think about the local action units, there's pluses and minuses. Housing Nantucket was formed, we spun out of the Housing Authority so that we could create units without all of the bureaucracy that is required for the Housing Authority. So in other words, we don't have to have lotteries for our units. We don't have to have long wait periods, like for example, on the shy list, you have to have basically a six-month lead time from when you get noticed that there's a vacancy, to when you can actually fill the unit. So those are things that I think are drawbacks to getting on the shy list. If we, there's also a regulatory agreement.
How, what is your waiting list now? How many people do you have that want housing, and would that six months be a problem?
The way we do it now, we have a rolling application, so we just accept applications when people come through our door, and they do a lot. So we sort them by income bracket and bedroom size, and we figure out, you know, if someone, say, has two girls, it's a household of four with two girls, we'll put them on a two-bedroom list, a three-bedroom list, and a four-bedroom list, because they're actually capable of filling all of those. So then when we get a unit that's open, we look at the rest of our 30 units around the island, and we try to see where there's a gap in the income brackets that we serve, because we serve from 50 to 100% AMI, and sometimes more, if people earn more as they're in our housing, they stay in. So anyway, so when we get that vacancy, we can go to our ready-to-rent list, look at who's qualified, and also consider who's in urgent need of housing. And we can select, use our own criteria and policies to select the tenant that can move into the house quickest. And I guess it's just discretion that we're able to use in order to fill the unit quickly. So that all that has to happen is that tenant will give their landlord notice, and then they can move in. If you're on the shy list, you have to wait for the tenant to move, you have to start advertising. It can't just be on Nantucket. We would have to advertise regionally, and we would have to work with DHCD to figure out, does that mean Boston? Does it mean the Cape, like where exactly? It certainly will be off Nantucket, and then accept applications for the lottery. And then, you know, it's a, I think it's a two-months advertising period. Then you need to collect the application, get the, hold the lottery, and then you need to, that tenant would need to give their landlord notice. So that's why the time period is so long. So there could be vacant units that could be filled by people who need housing desperately, that we can't fill, because it's on the shy list. And that's why Housing Nantucket exists, and we really think that that's a really great thing for the community, that to be able to provide that expedience. Then you also have the regulatory agreement. So that would, it's a permanent restriction on the unit. Once your unit is on the local action, you know, if it's part of that local action program, then we all, Housing Nantucket developer, the town, and DHCD, all sign a regulatory agreement that gets recorded on the property in perpetuity. Every year, we have to report to you what the rents are, who's in our units. Then you have to report to the state and let them know that you've checked in with us, and everything looks okay. And then the state, you know, I guess, I don't know if they respond or how they get back to you. But there's just a lot more bureaucracy and oversight in it, that we're functioning well the way we are now. And it's actually because of how hard it is to work with the state is the whole purpose of our organization. So if you are able to do what Tobias suggested, I certainly would, and I think our organization would, and the community would benefit from that. But I also see where you're coming from, you want to up your shy numbers. It's kind of, I just think we all need to understand what the benefits and drawbacks to using Housing Nantucket units to up the shy numbers.
But then the question, I guess, is from the board, is from a policy direction, should we, if we're going to give something, you should be getting something. And so, and so in theory, I don't like the bureaucracy part of this. It doesn't sound very easy and.
It doesn't make sense, yeah.
But at the same time, I don't like the fact that we're going to be held up. You know, if we don't increase our shy numbers, we're going to be held up continually, and it's going to be, you know. And if we set a policy that, oh, you don't really have to comply, you know, we're going to still be in this situation. So I don't know how we.
Yeah, it seems to me it's another way, that of saying to our citizens, the next person who buys a lot on Cliff Road and wants to put a 40B there, we're not actively aggressively supporting shy numbers, and you just have to accept that's the community policy. And if that helps a 40B get approved, so be it. And I think that's the implication of not being firm. And so it's, I understand.
Or is there a way to adjust?
And the local option, but maybe there are ways to talk to the state and get some way to deal with this issue.
Streamline, if there were a way to talk to the state and streamline the local option, there's no way.
Yeah, they have, it's all this affirmative fair marketing, and it's very strict local preferences. And plus, when we do, as a developer, say, like at 18 Tacoma, we want to put three units there. Well, we want to put the minimum restriction on it, so that we can get the most units on the shy list. So in other words, we'll just commit to one of those units to be below 80% AMI. That's the low-income unit. The other two units, we just, you know, we have our CPC restrictions, but we're going to be renting them below 100% AMI. But it's just that one unit that we're going to commit to the, their real regulation. So that's the only one that's going to have to have the lottery and all that. Well, with the affirmative fair marketing, they want you to put 70% of the affordable units, that's the maximum that you can put a local preference on it. So we only have one unit, so then you can't have a local preference. You'd have to have.
Why don't you have all three units?
Because it's, then you're just saying, we don't want to provide to anyone earning above 80% AMI.
Okay, so, for me, for me. But on a rent, my understanding is if you have a rental situation, you put one unit on the shy, the other three are rental, they're still going to count.
They get on the shy list, right. But you're talking about local preference right here.
Exactly, so you're still going to count those three?
Yes.
But those aren't going to be beholden to the same reporting, et cetera?
Right, the other two would not be beholden to the reporting, yes.
Even if it, even if the local preference was on there, it would still have to undergo the same timeframe of the lottery?
The two units would not have to do.
No, but the one.
The one unit would have to do the.
With or without local preference?
Yes, with or without. The local preference just means when you pull the name in the lottery.
Be counted.
I mean, most likely, in reality, your applicants are going to come from here. Or it's going to be someone who has a connection to here and actively wants to move here for a job. Most likely.
If we're advertising.
But the advertising process is lengthy.
Here's my thought on the whole thing. We, this was a piece of town land that we donated to your organization. You're using CPC funds, which is taxpayer money, to build the buildings. Either we get these houses on the shy list, or you're going to have to pay for the applications. I'm just not going to give away any more of town and taxpayer money without getting these houses on the shy list. Every house on the shy list counts. And, you know, I know it's difficult, and I know we might have somebody from off-island move into them, but if we don't get started somewhere, we're never going to get there.
Yeah, that's why I think it's straightforward.
You know what? If you don't want to put them on the shy list, pay the hookup fee. Or maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but.
But the other two won't have the advertising requirement.
That's right.
So the other two could be full, the one, from time to time, may have a four-month vacancy.
Right.
A lot of the people in the housing stay there for a long time.
Yes.
In practice.
Mm-hmm.
So the turnover, and the impact of the turnover, isn't that frequent, so. So we could suffer through it.
Mm-hmm.
And a question.
Which would be my recommendation.
And, in, in, in theory, though, don't all your units, like, couldn't they all potentially count towards the shy list?
Well, some of our units are rented above 80% AMI, because our housing policies, we are committed to rent 75% of our housing to less than 80% AMI. So we can, we have 25% of our housing that we can rent to, up to, it's 140% AMI or something.
So, and how many housing units do you have currently?
Thirty.
So the way I see it, and I really agree with you, Rick, and Matt, and Bobby, saying we should really try to accomplish this goal of getting on the shy list. However, you know, we have 30 units, you know, 75% of those would, in theory, count towards the shy list, that currently don't. Now, we're, we're, we're going to hem and haw over, you know, a few units, three units, to get them on the shy list, which is good in our long-term goals, but ultimately, we're not going to meet the shy numbers for two or three years, assuming the Richmond development goes well, and we build this facility next to us, this affordable housing. So, you know, if we look at a whole plan and a system for how we're going to meet our shy numbers, or meet our 10% affordability according to the state, we're not going to really achieve that for another four or five years. Now, it's a policy question, in a great scenario, that would be like amazing, out of the park if we achieved that. So ideally, how do we kind of fit this into a bigger policy where we move towards the shy list, but then we can get all, you know, 30 of these units onto the shy list, instead of just picking out one or two? Is the policy really help us to get there? Or are we just, are we just looking good and trying to say we're just, we're moving forward, and that's reaching out to our residents, saying we're trying to deal with, but really, we're ultimately not going to meet those numbers for a number of years? So I'm wondering if there's like another way forward, where we go to the state and say, hey, look, we have 30 units, we want them on the shy list, what's your problem?
So are you suggesting that, that we get the rest of Anne's units onto the shy somehow? Is that your proposal?
I, I think so, if it's not an owner, I'm not trying to make it an onerous process, I'm trying to get out of that. But I'm saying, let's look at the big picture and try to really tackle it, instead of just focusing on one or two units and plug away at it.
But what you're really saying, Tobias, is not to do it now.
That is...
Let's get right down to it.
Yeah.
And they may or may not ever get to it.
This is true.
And that's my concern, is that, you know, for three units, we're making a big fuss and a big thing, but it gets us started, and it forces the issue. I think Anne would love to have the other, all thirty on the shy list, so we can work towards that at the same time you get specific on these units.
Yeah, but I...
So I'm not so inclined to give up on these.
I hear that, and I respect that, I just think in the long term, if we think about, how do we really make our housing work, we need to start addressing the state and these issues in the long term, and have a strategy for how to move forward.
It's a parallel strategy, it's not an either-or.
Right. We can do both.
So I understand.
You know, the issue here is that there's a lot of bureaucracy involved, and tape, red tape that we have to go through, and it's a lot of work, and we have to fill out forms, and Anne has to fill out forms, and it's just easier not to do it. And you know what? I have to fill out a lot of forms in the fisheries world, and the first time, they're a real pain in the butt. And the second time, they get a little easier, and by the time you do the form, the third time, you know exactly which lines to fill out, which ones not to, and you move on and you're done. And, you know, it's got to start somewhere. Now, like I said, this is just me, but we've already given away the land, and we've given away the money to build the buildings, that's all taxpayer money and taxpayer land. At this point, I'm not willing to give away anymore unless the taxpayers get something out of it, which is these three units on the shy list.
Bobby, it's not just you. I've said I feel the same way, and I think if we have to get...
Well, I know, but we haven't voted on it yet, so I don't want to make it sound like it's the whole board.
Bobby, I think we should all be working together towards solving this issue. I might have a different policy point of view from that, I might vote differently because of this, but I...
I get what you're saying, but Tobias, what you're saying sounds great, sitting here, but it's not going to happen. You're not going to go to the state housing board and say, you know what, we've got thirty units here, we want to put them on the shy, but you make it very difficult for us. Anne would have to probably take some of her tenants out of those units, it would probably, it would be a nightmare for her to do.
Maybe, maybe my thought is misguided then, Bobby, but I'm trying to move forward in a more larger enlightened way instead of just dogging down, and I might have a different view policy-wise, but I...
I wish it was, I wish we could just do what you just said, like, look, we're a unique place, Nantucket is, our housing is unique, we're like nowhere else in the state, except for maybe the Vineyard, they might be similar to us. We have unique problems, we have unique people that make a lot more money than what you think are, need affordable housing, but really do, and we should be able to tailor-craft something that suits our island. That would be the common sense way to do it.
Yeah, so we should secede then, is what you're saying.
But it's not, it's not the, it's not the American way, unfortunately. Maybe it's Trump's way, but it's not the rest of the country's. Anyway, we should need to get back to the task, which is, do we want to waive these fees or not? I'm open to entertain all motions at this point.
I'd make a motion to get us started, that we agree to waive the fees as long as we get the units on the shy list.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion on that? I think we've already discussed it.
I think we've already discussed it.
I think we do need to identify who that's going to fall to manage on a yearly basis.
Well, we have to do...
Is it going to go to the trust fund?
Tucker, do you know the procedures here? Can you help us out with this?
You know, we... Tucker Holland, Anne and I have looked over the information that's provided. We're very comfortable saying that we can handle the town's part of it. A lot of the information does come from the project developer, but we're okay with it.
Okay. So between you and Anne, we can get the forms filled out?
But then, if there's a yearly reporting, then we need to set up, we have to be confident that that's set up.
I think we do have to be confident, but I don't think we have to have that incorporated and pre-decided tonight to make this sort of policy judgment.
I just wanted to bring it up.
It's good to know.
We do have a, have funding for a part-time housing-related position for fiscal seventeen, so I would imagine we've tasked them with that.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so the motions been made and seconded to waive the fees provided the houses, the units go on the shy list. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention, Bobby.
Abstention or opposed?
All abstain.
Abstain, so four, four yeses, one abstaining.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. Alright, I have one more public hearing, I almost missed, I'm sorry. I'm going to open a public hearing to consider the amending the charter, chapter 200 traffic rules and regulations for residential parking permit rates. This is continued from February 16th. Was, why was it continued? Was I away or something?
Um, I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here, that's why.
So I'd love to recap if possible.
That was why, Anne.
And I had a couple of questions.
It was continued so that we could provide suggested language, which I'm hoping he can get it up there, because I don't have my copy with me. Essentially, the part we came to was, what you wanted was language that would allow people who were on the street list for the town of Nantucket that lived on streets that were covered in a residential parking district to be able to obtain during a certain window a additional permits at the cost of fifty dollars each rather than paying the escalating fee that they paid last year, and...
You gave them the month of January, right?
We gave them, we gave them the month of January, basically, to buy their permit. And just this year only, because of the fact January's already passed, we, for 2016, they can buy it during the month of April, and then after that, it falls subject to whatever the other, the current regulation is, the escalating fee for additional vehicles.
Okay.
Looks like a good solution.
Yeah. Any comments from the public? Okay.
I just want to make sure.
Wait, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then you can ask your question. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on one point, because I know there are people who are going to want to understand this. There's a lot of houses that do rent on like a weekly or two-weekly turnover, that don't have parking spaces, and do residential permits for each rental. It's one, it's always one, you know, one car, but does this mean that if they, is it going to be two-fifty and five-hundred for each one?
In the case you're talking about, somebody who's renting a house for, I don't know, period of time, two weeks, one week, a month, they pay by the day.
Okay, so that's not changing.
And there's a separate fee for them.
Okay, I want...
This is just, this is just the seasonal one.
To have it for the whole time? Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Alright, so I've closed the public hearing, is there a motion to approve the change?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? Okay, good. Alright, we've had the fire station update. Committee reports and comments from the board. Any committee reports?
Well, we had CPC, there was some discussion about the skate park security and stuff, but I think there's, things are moving forward. There was a pole on order, I'm looking at the chief.
There's a camera system that's about to be installed at the skate park.
There was just some discussion at CPC about the skate park. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. We're, the, actually, the equipment's in, and we were going to start installing it last week, we get, the base and the wiring's in. Soon as we get some decent weather here, we'll be out to install the pole and the camera. It's a system that will be, allow us to beam a video signal from the skate park directly to the dispatch center here at the police station.
That's great.
Anything else?
Bobby, I just wanted to say, I attended the Cape Cod Selectman Association on Friday, and Pete was with me. It was very quick, but we got support from all the other Cape Island towns, kind of on that letter we sent off, so that's moving forward. And I just wanted to let you know, that's continuing to plug along on that front.
Our fisheries, county fisheries man is on top of it. I just wanted to make a comment.